Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 18th City Council Meeting 2019, the last council meeting of the year. And could I please have Pastor Ron Bailey from New Beginning Church come forward for the opening prayer, or for the invocation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear God, we're so grateful, excited for this tremendous time of the year, when we join even an angelic host at the celebration of Christ coming to this earth. We thank you, God, for the gift of your Son. We're also thankful for the gift of city council, police, firefighters, first responders. Lord, I can't help but think of what the angels promised: peace on earth to men on whom God's favor rests. I first pray for the peace of the city of Los Banos. I pray, Lord, for the safety and wisdom for the city council, the firefighters, the police, the first responders. We are so grateful, and we honor them for their service. Give them your wisdom and insight, because your word declares righteousness exalts a nation. We ask for your blessing in this meeting tonight, and we pray this, God, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the December 18th, 2019, meeting of the Los Banos City Council. And Chief Breezy, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call, Director Maloney.
Correa, Johnson Santos, Jones, Lewis, Volalta.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, and detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, community residents. I'm Sandy Lemus, and I live in Los Banos. I have a few exciting opportunities available for people. They're going fast, so you gotta jump on these. Salvation Army, we have the opportunity to have bell ringers, and Salvation Army does so much for our community. It's just amazing. I'm a church member, and I've been a soldier and a volunteer for many, many years. It's just amazing what we do. The bell ringing funds all stay in Los Banos, and they help fund our programs for the next year. It is a lot of fun. I was ringing at Save Mart, and I was having so much fun. Someone volunteered to play the accordion with me, which brought in more fun, and we just, it's a lot of fun. You could bring kids. They can sing. They can dance. We have wonderful volunteers, but we don't have enough. We ring from nine in the morning till nine at night. We ring at Hobby Lobby, Walmart, J.C. Penney's, Walgreens, the post office, and Save Mart. If you are interested, you can give Margie Cotta a call at 559-974-9970. We will be ringing to Christmas Eve. You can also contact me at my home phone number. My cell number always says my voicemail is full, and I don't know why. I don't have any messages on there. You can call me at my house, 209-826-5648. We also received a homeless grant for Salvation Army for $18,000. I was talking to Chief Breezy, and the city is doing so many proactive things to solve this issue we have, and we're gonna be joining forces and hopefully making a positive difference in the community. We are doing case management. We're really getting to know personally the homeless people that come in, and we have a lot of, like, temporary homeless people, and those are obviously gonna be easier to place. Habitat for Humanity, we did such an outstanding job building two homes last year that we pretty well spent all our funding for low-income, affordable housing. We're in the process of rebuilding our storehouses. We don't have a Habitat Restore yet, but we hope to find a reasonable place soon, or we're hoping preferably if someone would like to adopt us. We are gonna have a fundraiser, the New Year's Eve event. This is the second annual one. It's gonna be, obviously, on New Year's Eve. There's gonna be lots of dancing and prancing, and we have the Roaring Twenties theme. You can come dressed as a gangster or a flapper. Is that what they're called, flappers? Couldn't remember. It was flipper, flipper, flopper, flappers. You can come dressed however you want. We have a photo booth. There's gonna be tri-tip, shrimp, desserts. We are gonna have an Uber-ish van out there where we will be transporting people safely back into town if they do too much drinking, dancing, and prancing. We'll have a midnight toast. It's just a wonderful event. I had so much fun last year, and it's a way to kinda, so we can start doing Brush with Kindness and critical home repairs in town. If you are interested, I do have tickets available, or you can contact our executive director, Ashley Williams, at 509-9026. I wanna wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Thank you, Sandy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Raquel White from Fresno, California. I am here from an organization called CFAC Construction Industry Force Account Council. It's a construction industry-supported organization dedicated to public contract code compliance and education. We do not represent a specific contractor, but rather advocate on behalf of the construction industry to ensure compliance with California's public contract code regulations, fair bidding opportunities, and proper awarding of public contracts. We do this by monitoring public agencies to ensure they are bidding public work contracts or projects over a certain bidding threshold. Although we represent the construction industry, we can also be a resource to agencies when they may have questions about bid splitting, change orders, advertising, and use of force account. We also encourage agencies to become signatory to the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, also known as the ACT. There are over 1,200 agencies signatory to the ACT, and I would like to commend the city of Los Banos for being one of those participating agencies. I'm here to introduce myself and my company and wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I have some business cards that I would like to give to the city clerk before I leave and encourage anyone to give me a call if they have any questions or concerns about any public contract codes and compliances. Does anyone have any questions?
We're not able to comment on items, but we would gladly accept your cards, and if you could give them to the city clerk, we greatly appreciate it. And if we have any questions, then we can call.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas again to you.
Thank you for coming.
You're very welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Jim.
Members of city council and staff, I'm Jim Valentine, resident of Los Banos. Once again, I bring you a Christmas invitation from the Quanis Club of Los Banos and the Los Banos Fire Department. I'm here to remind everyone of the 37th Annual Christmas Eve Dinner, which will be held at fire station number 1, 333 Seventh Street, which is the corner of Seventh and C. Dinner will be served on December 24th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will have our traditional barbecue chicken, pasta salad, roll, pies, and beverage. Santa will visit from 12 to 1. The dinner is free for all. Deliveries will also be available for those who otherwise are unable to come to the fire station. They can give me a call at 769-6703. And again, I wanna publicly thank the city and especially Fire Chief Hurley for the use of the fire station, and once again for cosponsoring this event. Flyers in both English and Spanish are available in the lobby here at City Hall for more information. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you again.
I'll be there.
All right. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name's John Kates. I'm the current president of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, and that's my hat for tonight, this public forum. Wanted to just underscore and reiterate the thanks and gratitude to Chief Breezy, the police force, and my fellow vital members for making the Christmas parade that we had on the 12th, I think it was? Whatever date that was.
It's a Friday.
Yeah, on that Friday. Very successful day, night, and it wouldn't be the kind of parade that we've had consistently year over year if it wasn't for the police department and city staff doing what they do for us, keeping us safe, having the streets closed down, and just making sure that, even Parks and Rec, making sure the stage is put together, and, you know, the lights are ready to go, and we light the tree and all of that. So I wanted to just give you guys a heartfelt thank you again for doing everything you do. I was just reinstalled as the president for 2020 for the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, and with that, I'm looking forward to continuing to grow our partnership with the Los Banos Downtown Association as well as with the city. And part of my game plan for 2020 Chamber of Commerce is to begin to align and grow better our economic development vision with that of the cities and see what we can do as partners in continuing to do more economic development, cooperative efforts together. So at any rate, thank you guys very much. I wish everybody here a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'm probably gonna see some of you before those two times occur, but I'll cover it all here. Thank you very much, and we'll see you guys later.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Welcome, Supervisor Sovera. Now seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and we will go on to item six, which is consideration of approval consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we vote it on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows: warrant numbers 219-346 through 219-582 in the amount of $1,081,132.36. Minutes for the December 4th, 2019, city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6165, approving a lease agreement between the city of Los Banos and Pentagon Company DBA Delta Farms for approximately 50 acres of pasture land and 150 acres of farmable land located at the wastewater treatment plant. City Council Resolution Number 6166, approving and adopting final tract map number 2016-02 East Center Phase 2B and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, more specifically identified as APN 431270005, and the applicant is Pioneer Development Company, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6167, amending City Council Resolution Number 5604 regarding use of the city council chambers to include city hall conference rooms, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who wishes to remove an item for discussion? Not seeing or hearing anyone, can I please have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Santos, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Let's go on to public hearing. Item seven. If you challenge the action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit and categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities and allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment for Bertha Carrillo DBA, is that, how's that pronounced?
Ahoya.
Ahoya Restaurant, to be located at 1041 East Pacheco Boulevard, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 026182003. Item A1, City Council Resolution Number 6168, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities and approving a conditional use permit number 2019-04 to allow for the sale of alcohol under a type 41 on-sale beer and wine license for 1041 East Pacheco Boulevard, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 026182003. And we're gonna go to Director Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. There's a PowerPoint presentation with this item.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So the proposal before you tonight is for a type 41 alcohol license. This is for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment. This particular location was occupied previously by Taqueria 152. This project is located at 1041 East Pacheco Boulevard. The previous occupancy of Taqueria 152, their business license was canceled on July 3rd, 2018, and because that conditional use permit has not been in use for more than a year, it becomes null and void, and a new conditional use permit is required. This particular business is proposing to be open seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., and the serving of beer and wine will cease at 8:00 p.m. They are located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District. This is the location. I apologize, that's a GIS map, but the property is highlighted in yellow, and it's marked with the red arrow, and this is 1041 East Pacheco Boulevard. It's in between South 11th and South 10th Street. According to the municipal code, conditional use permits are analyzed in accordance with the general plan, but also in accordance with the general use permit criteria. And then there's specific criteria for on-sale and off-sale of beer and wine, in which this project has met all of those findings, and the issuing authority is ABC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control of the State of California. This particular project is located and since its tract 23.01, which is in the lower left hand of the city, so it's the southwest quadrant of the city, and it's bound by Pacheco and Mercy Springs. This is the floor plan, and the cameras are highlighted for you. In, within this particular handout exhibit is blue, but all of the dining area is encompassed within the camera locations, and the restaurant is located at the back of the property, as well as off-street parking is also located, not only in the front of the property, but also in the back of the property, off of the alley. This is the location at 1041 East Pacheco Boulevard. A public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on December 6th, 2019, and as the date of this report, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number 6168, approving conditional use permit number 2019-04, to allow the on-sale of beer and wine for Bertha Correa, doing business as Ahoya Restaurant, to be located at 1041 East Pacheco Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing, and I'm opening up the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6168. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And any comments, or, Mrs. Lewis?
That was from the last.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Any comments from council? Okay, do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, sorry, finding the number here.
6168.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6168.
Okay, I second. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6168 as read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Item B, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit and categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities to allow use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide establishment for Tariq Abetti DBA Mountain Mike's Pizza to be located at 2260 East Pacheco Boulevard Suites A and B, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 428160027. And item B1, City Council Resolution Number 6169, finding that the proposed project to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities and approving a conditional use permit number 2019-06 to allow the sale of alcohol under a type 41 on-sale beer and wine license at 2260 East Pacheco Boulevard Suites A and B, more specifically identified as Assessor's Parcel Number 428160027. And we'll go out to Director Elms again?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and city council. Another PowerPoint presentation with this one. Okay. The proposal before you tonight is another type 41 alcohol license for beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating place. This is for Mountain Mike's Pizzeria. This would be the second location in Los Banos by the same franchisee. So the franchisee owns the Mountain Mike's. That's on Pacheco Boulevard between Fourth and Sixth Street, and this would be their second location within the College Plaza Shopping Center by Food for Less. This particular location was previously occupied by Village Liquor, which operated with a type 21 alcohol license, which is for the off-sale of general alcohol, so hard alcohol. That is a, much, it is seen as an intensification. A type 21 is much more intense than a type 41 in terms of classifications per ABC, and the type 41 is seen as less intense, but because it's a modification of the original conditional use permit, a new conditional use permit is required. This particular business is proposing to be open seven days a week, Sunday through Thursday, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And they are located within the Highway Commercial Zoning District. This is the location at 2260 East Pacheco Boulevard Suites A and B, which is next now to Sherwin-Williams. On the use permit criteria and analysis, all of the findings are located within the staff report, and this project does meet the general use permit criteria as well as the on-sale criteria and findings located within the municipal code. And as with the previous public hearing, this is a type 41, so the issuing authority is the Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, of the State of California. This particular project is located and since its tract 23.02, which is bound by Highway 165 Mercy Springs. 165 Mercy Springs, and it's the eastern side, essentially the eastern quadrant of the City of Los Banes. This is the floor plan of the Suites A and B. So the security plan, the cameras are highlighted for you in yellow. And the dining area will have complete security camera footage and coverage. This is the location of 2260 East Pacheco Boulevard. Tenant improvements are currently underway in preparation for the opening of this business. Public comment, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banes Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on December 6. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So staff is asking the City Council to adopt Resolution Number 6169, approving conditional use permit number 2019-06, to allow the on-sale of beer and wine for Mountain Mike's Pizza located at 2260 East Pacheco Boulevard, Suites A and B. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, I forgot to ask on the last one, too. With both of these, the cameras are to the satisfaction of the police chief?
Yes, they are.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from counsel? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, is there any exterior coverage for cameras for this particular site?
Yes, so the conditions of approval require interior and exterior coverage to the satisfaction of the police chief.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. So I'd like to open up the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6169. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing your hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 6169.
Do I have a second? Ms. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Santos, for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6169. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item C, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of amendments to the City Building Code Ordinance by adoption, by reference, by reference, the California Building Code 2019 Edition and related 2019 Edition codes. Item 1C, ordinance number 1179, adopting the reference, the reference, the 2019 Edition of the California Building Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Energy Code and 2019 Edition of the California Historical Building Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Referenced Standards Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Electrical Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Mechanical Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Administrative Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Existed Building Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Green Building Standards Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Residential Code, the 2019 Edition of the California Plumbing Code, by amendment to Title 8, Chapter 1 of the Los Banes Municipal Code. Mason, are there any more codes? Oh, you sure? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Tonight, tonight I bring you the introduction of ordinance 1179 referencing the 2019 Edition of the California Building Code, as well as the ordinance 1180 referencing the 2019 Edition of the California Fire Code. These are maintenance items that we do every three years because of the new California Building Code and California Fire Code are published in there entirely, and is applicable to all buildings that submit an application for building permits during the effective period. These building standard codes incorporate all the regulations applicable to all disciplines of the construction industry, including the building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing codes, as well as the fire code. A local city or county may make a more restrictive standard necessary for their local condition. The California Building Standards Codes are based on model codes written by the International Code Council, the National Fire Protection Association, and the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials. The publication of the code updates by these organizations triggers state considerations, amendments, and adoptions of the updated set of codes used by jurisdictions within the state. Every three years, these new additions of the California Building Standard Codes become effective 180 days after publication date of July 1. Therefore, the 2019 Building Standard Codes go into effect January 1 of 2020. And all the building permits submittals after January 1, 2020, will be subject to the updated codes. Notices of this public hearing were placed in the local newspaper, as well as the city website. Staff recommend, is not recommending any, the adoption of any new local amendments to the building codes. And staff also recommends to receive the staff report, open public hearing, receive public comment, waive the first reading, and introduce the ordinance 1179 as submitted.
Okay. All right. Any comment from counsel at this time? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mason. Okay, now I'd like to open the public hearing on ordinance number 1179. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance 1179? Not seeing your hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And we have two motions. We have the waiving of the first reading and the introduction. Any questions by counsel before we vote? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance 1179 as read by title.
Have a second. Ms. Santos?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos, for the approval of, oh, I'm sorry, for the waiving of the first reading of ordinance number 1179. All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1179 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Lewis for the introduction of 1179, and a second by Mrs. Santos. Director Maloney, roll call vote?
Forrea, Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walata?
Yes. Motion carried. Item D, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of amendments to the City Fire Prevention Code Ordinance by adoption, by reference, the California Fire Code, 2019 Edition of Local Amendments thereto, ordinance number 1180, adopting by reference the 2019 Edition of the California Fire Code by amendment to Title 4, Chapter 3 of the Los Banes Municipal Code and adoption of local amendments thereto. And again, this is a first reading and introduction. Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As stated earlier, the California Fire Code is also updated every three years. With this update, we include our local amendments to the fire code addressing local needs and requirements that are particular to the City of Los Banes. Staff is not recommending the adoption of any new local amendments to the new California fire codes currently. Notices of the public hearings were also placed in the local newspaper, as well as the city website. Again, staff recommends to receive the staff report, open the public hearing, receive public comment, waive the first reading, and introduce the ordinance number 1180 as submitted.
Thank you. Any comment from counsel? Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing on 1180. Anyone wishing to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And this is a waiving of the first reading and introduction. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1180 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motioned by Lewis, second by Santos, to, for the waiving of the first reading of 1180. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1180 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, for the introduction of ordinance number 1180. Director Maloney?
Forrea, Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walata?
Yes, motion carried. Item number eight, announcement of District 2 vacancy on Planning Commission. Director Maloney, do you want to say anything?
There is one unexpired term on the Planning Commission that it's, it's actually for District 2, and the expired term expires December 31, 2020. And so we're currently advertising for that vacancy.
Okay. And when does that close? Is it 18th or something?
The 15th?
15th.
No, 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 no. The 20th, Friday, December 20.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any comment from any council member on that agenda item? Just informational? Okay, let's go on to item nine. City of Los Banes Improvement Standards and Specifications Update in regards to Councilmember Jones and, see, Councilmember Jones's councilmember request. That's a mouthful. Okay, we're going to go to Mr. Fajian?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This improvement standard specs update was in the works before your request, but I know your request had more to do than just with this, but we'll just cover this. As you, as you can see, it was budgeted for this fiscal year to start the work, and we're going to be starting it. So pretty much our standards that we have now are for a guide to design and build infrastructure within the city limits. And it's for the developers, engineers, architects, and city staff to use as a guide, as a base level of design requirements needed to adhere to building in the city, not homes or not commercial buildings. This is the infrastructure, the streets, the lighting, sewer, storm. The one area that we do get into onsite would be front yard landscaping. We do get into that during the subdivision review. The current standards that we have, the standards, the improvement standards were way, was adopted by the council way back in October 6, 2004, by Resolution Number 4539, so they're extremely old. Four standards they are. And the landscape specifications actually were by Resolution 4928, which was in November 7, 2007. And these standards are available on the city's website, and I think I left the link in the staff report. I'll just go over a little bit what's in the current standards. It's a, if you don't count the, yeah, if you're not counting the landscaping section, it's about 130 pages long at the moment. And I think there's another 35 pages of landscaping to add, that adds that, it's about 160 at the moment. And if you just, in your report, it's, there's an introduction which just gives you some basic guidelines for it. And then you go down to the design standards, the part 2, 3, and 4 are all written. And it's the design standards that go from streets, lighting, drainage facilities, sanitary sewers, water service, landscape, miscellaneous category. Then part 3 is a construction standard specification, which describes basically how did, the minimum requirement for construction of these improvements, compaction, issues like that. And that's site work, structural concrete, pipelines, and street lighting. Then standard details, we have the street improvements, the storm drains, sanitary sewer, water improvements, backfill embedding, landscape, and miscellaneous. We see the, the new standards, we see to be pretty similar to this. It might be arranged a little differently, but they just need to come up to all the requirements that we enforce now, but we enforce mainly on policy because of the standards are old. So it's a basic, we have to increase our basics to agree with the Caltrans Department Transportation Standards, the Model Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, which we're closer on that because it's a newer one. MPDES, a very important one, that's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We have to do that. That's with our general permit and our waste permit. And MS4, which is the Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, which basically is what goes into our storm system and separating that. So we have to bring the standards up to, to basic law, basic standard practices in the industry right now. We have, I, we did execute task, task order for this work with one of the five city council-approved on-call civil engineering firms, Precision Engineering. And there, we'll be kicking that off probably in the next month or two. And part of their task order includes four review or coordination meetings with city staff, four stakeholder meetings. And stakeholder meetings in this case would be your developers, your private engineers, and anyone else that wants to come involved. It's announced to everybody, but that's usually who shows up, is your private engineers and your developers to let us know what part of the standards they'd like to revise, such, do you want to, do they want to go back to a roll curb situation? Like one standard that we, by policy enforces, everything's LED now, all streetlights are LED. And our standards do not call that out, but it's really hard to get the other, the old style. And the costs are cheaper enough for LEDs, so it's easy, it's, we have no argument with, from the developers to put LEDs in, but we'll put that actually in the standards when we do that. Things such as how big your waste, what do you?
Your trash enclosure?
Your trash enclosure need to be, has to be updated, too, because now we have more trash enclosures than we have organic. So we have to update that to reflect what businesses will need. That's just one of many. And we, and after the stakeholders meeting, we also have three city council planning commission meetings. That's not necessarily together, every one of them, but at least the first one will be. And that will be close to kickoff, because we'd like to get the city council and the planning commission to give input to our consultant as to what they see and what they'd like to have change or at least looked at, because there is some technical things that may not work with what people want. And we have to explain that and review that and look at what other cities that have things that are less than 20,000 years old are doing. So we'll have to look at that, but that's the point to come in and bring in issues that you may have as you've gone around subdivisions. All that's the points to bring that up, and that's the point where we can start addressing those. And as I said, the notice to proceed for this task order probably will be executed in February of 2020. We did sign the task order. We just didn't sign the notice to proceed at this moment. The cost of this study is, has been not to exceed a $78,000 number. That's over an 18-month period. That's not, that's not a year. It's an 18-month period. We did extend it to an 18-month period, just to get all this interaction and stakeholders and the council involved. And to do this correctly, we need that time for the meetings. Now, we have, we did budget, and it's in your fiscal impact section, we did budget $100,000 out of three accounts for this year. So we'll probably, if you just look at it percentage-wise, we'll probably spend about, about, you know, $40,000 of that, and we'll have to carry over more money. But we won't be spending the $100 this year because we're going into an 18-month, 18-month period, and we're only six months left of this year. So we'll have to probably make a mid-year adjustment and actually reflect what that money's going to be this year. So. And if there's any, and I just, it's just, it's just interesting that this is brought up by, by councilmember Jones, because we were just getting ready to execute it. So it, it addresses the public works issues. I know there's probably others besides that that you're interested, but this is the public works section that we'll be addressing. And the, what, 2004, 2020, it's going to be, it's 16 years old. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Questions? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there was a lot of technical stuff in there.
Sorry, yes.
Some of the things that I'm interested in, as far as upgrading the codes of concern is, you know, the sidewalks and our green frontage. And I've noticed in our new developments, in some areas, there's an ivy that's being planted, but the residents aren't caring for it. You know, it's growing into the gutter system. And I know that's their responsibility, keep that trend back and in decent order, but they're not, they're not doing it. So one of the things I would like to see us go back to is widening the sidewalks. I would like to see roll curbs. I would like to see the ingress and egress dips being done away with, and just having that straight across, as we did in our old garden district. We have some rolled curbs in that area, and there's, there's no dip in the ingress and egress into the driveway. It makes it easier for people who are handicapped to walk on, people who are in wheelchairs to roll across. They don't have to drive into the street, which is, in my opinion, a hazard for them. And to do away with that, that green frontage, to allow And to do away with that green frontage, to allow trees to be planted back on people's property and have them care for it on their property rather than be out in an area that's basically city property, but they have to care for it. Fire hydrants in some of the areas are being put in places that take up parking space, where they could be put in between two properties. Even on my property, the fire hydrant is located between my driveway and my neighbor's driveway, and it doesn't take up any parking space on the street. I think those are some of the concerns that I have about how we're building right now, and I would like to see us update that as quickly as possible to eliminate some of those hazards that I see that we're dealing with in our community.
Yeah, those are good points, and please, please bring them up when we have our joint session. To address a couple of those things, on your roll curb, the, we actually, we actually have a few areas that are roll curving now, and they're in cul-de-sacs over in the western side of the city in the cul-de-sacs, and they do work very well, it seems like, I mean, that, we went away from that. The only interest that public works has in what kind of curb you use is that you keep the street as a storm drain conduit, so you have to have a certain capacity in the street, but the roll curb allows that also. The other thing is, I think, I don't, the last time that I recall the separated sidewalk from the curb was when they were matching something. I think all the subdivisions are choosing the monolithic against the curb approach now. The other thing you brought up, the fire hydrants, that is, that's not a problem with the standards, that's a problem with the plan checking, and I talked to, talked to Councilman Jones about this. That's a problem with us just looking at the standard, say, 350 feet, and not looking at the impact of street parking. So I have let all our consultants, plan checkers know that has to be on their plan checklist. Not only do you maintain the distance, you also look to have the minimal impact on parking as possible, because you're absolutely correct about that, some of those are atrocious where they've been located, so it's not good for the parking. But all those things are really good points and points that we really would look for you to bring forward, and we won't forget them either, but at that initial kickoff with the city council and planning, and there'll be other comments, I'm sure, from other people, and those are good points that we want to, because I know the most important ones are the ones that are visible to people, the sidewalks, the streetlights, the electrolyzers. The underground is just, are we using the most current piping? Are we using the most current cals? Cals haven't changed for 30 years, they've been using the same for doing cals, but the piping has, and we do a lot of different piping, but it's not in our specs, so we have to show that, and so, but I appreciate the comments, they're all very good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There any other comments? Okay, there are none. This was for an informational item only, no action to be taken. Let's go on to item 10, advisement of public notices. Director Elm?
Those public hearings located in the packet were presented tonight, and there will not be a planning commission meeting on December 25. The next meeting will be on January 8, so no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to item 11, city manager's report.
Thank you, member, I have a few items this evening, first of which, where did it go, is the executive compensation report. On December 3, 2019, based upon my performance review, the finance director's salary was increased to $11,758 monthly, $141,096 annually, retroactive to August 15, 2019. So I have a couple of items to report on. City staff, public works director, police chief, fire chief, myself, and the mayor attended the first Caltrans State Route 152 Safety Task Force meeting yesterday. This task force was put together by District Director Dan McElhaney to look at State Route 152 and look at ways to improve highway safety and operations for drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians on State Route 152 within the city limits. So we'll be meeting monthly with Caltrans, and as information is available, I'll pass it on to the council. I never thought, secondly, I never thought I'd be as excited about a restroom being constructed as I was today. Happy to report that the 7th Street Ball Field restroom was craned into place this morning. We've got a little bit more site work to be done on the project, but significant progress on getting that restroom completed, so that is exciting, and that's a career first for me to be excited about a restroom. So, lastly, we are, we will be having on January 9, a parks master plan workshop at the community center. So this is an opportunity for the public to provide input into a parks master plan. January 9, 5:30 to 7:30 at the community center, we'll be looking at a future of parks in the city, looking at renovation, plans for renovating parks and facilities in the future as well, so please attend and provide your input. Lastly, happy holidays, thank you for attending the reception this evening, so happy holidays, have a happy and safe new year, since we will not be having a meeting until after the new year, so, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 12. Oh, any comment from council? Okay, let's go on to item 12. Report update on Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. Well, no surprise that we brought forth the motion for $5 million to be set aside for the improvements to help alleviate traffic on 152 and to help us with the construction of an alternative road. That was turned down, and the money went to AME, and I was the only one who opposed it as per your direction, so thank you, council, for the support, I really appreciate it. The, but what's funny is that, I think everyone knows that 152 is becoming a hazard, and now this District 10 director approached me and said, "We're going to put together a safety task force." And that safety task force now is comprised of his engineers and people from the city of Los Banos, namely, fire, Mason Hurley, Fire Chief Mason Hurley, Police Chief Gary Breezy, City Manager Terazus, and Mark Fagen, our Public Works Director, and I was there. And I have, did I miss anybody from the city? Okay. And then a number of Caltrans, they brought down their Caltrans staff. So, this has become serious, it's something that we can't ignore, and the county and MCAG should not ignore, because they showed a, and I can get that to you and have our city manager send you the accident report over three years at all the intersections on 152 by mile marker, and there are a significant number of accidents. The road is long overdue for improvement, and I just wish people had taken it seriously years ago, and we could have been light years ahead, but the money now is placed someplace else. The, I don't want anyone to get hurt on that road, none of us do. We all want to improve the structure, and so now Caltrans is in on this, and they are going to be working on some improvements, but again, it's going to take money, and they only have limited funds, so where's the rest of the money going to come from, for this project, in order not only to make the improvements on 152, but to fund any improvements that are going to need it for any access road after our PSR? So the good thing is that with the MCAG, the report, is that, is that what we're going to do is we're going to be working with Caltrans, they're going to work with our PSR, their department is going to be working with us, all their engineers, and so we're going to get like a three-for-one to bring everything together. So, but, but I'm telling you, we have to push as hard as we can, as hard as we can, to make sure that those needed improvements are done, because there can't be any more gamesmanship, we can't have any more saying that there are other needs in the county, because when I asked the engineer, I asked him a specific question, are, is, is, is all the projects that have been done in the county, 152 is of most need, and they couldn't deny that. 152 is of most need because that's the worst road, and yet other projects have been, have gone before it now. So, we need to be steadfast, and we need to make sure that we are all on the same page to get this corrected for our citizens and for our through traffic. So with that, with your guidance and your approval, I will continue to act as a team member with us into making sure that our road is taken care of here on the west side. So, I'd like to go on to item 13, city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mr. Jones.
Yes, I'm just going to keep this short, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe New Year's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I made a request for a council member item to be placed on the agenda in regards to downtown and bringing forth some new codes, ordinances, conditions, whatever it takes to bring our downtown up to a new level, a new standard, and moving forward to make it a better place for people to be and for our businesses. I spoke with our city manager in regards to this, and he shared with me that staff is working on this particular project at this moment, and will probably be bringing it forward to the council in February. So I'm going to withdraw my request that I put in last week and give them an opportunity to bring it to the council.
Thank you.
And with that, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a very safe and Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Faria. Thank you, Mr. Faria, quick report. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. I first want to start off by saying that the Christmas parade, I have to say, was probably the largest one I've seen, so thank you to everyone for putting, I'm thinking you to everyone for putting that on, all the volunteers, it was actually pretty, it was pretty great, so, thank you once again, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whatever you celebrate, I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful time, enjoy your families, enjoy your time relaxing, and I hope it's great for everyone, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey? And don't forget the Christmas Eve dinner at the fire station number one on 7th Street, always a great event, and they, if you know someone who needs a hearty meal, a nice Christmas Eve dinner, please come down, pick up the dinner, and deliver it to them. It's very important that we get the food out, the Kiwanis have done this for so many years, we are very appreciative of them as a club for what they do, and don't let that food go to waste. If you have someone who needs a hot meal on Christmas Eve, please come and pick it up for them and deliver it to them. Okay? And also, the Christmas parade, I mean, what can I say? It's, no one thinks of safety until you need something that wasn't done for safety. And between police and fire and vital, I got to tell you that, you know, it's like you're seen but not heard, and I just want to thank you personally, everyone who volunteered their time, and also the chamber, all the people who entered the floats, it was just a community effort, it's a wonderful parade. Thank you, council, for coming, it's staff, everybody that put this together, because it takes so much time and effort to put on these wonderful events for our city, and it's greatly appreciated. So, so thank you all for everyone and what you've contributed, because, you know, like I said, it's, you don't, you don't see something, you don't need something until you need it, and we just seem to cover all the bases with everything, and sometimes there are some sticking points, because planning has to make sure that they're planning the route correctly, and everything is smooth with any parade, so bear with us when that comes up, because we're only looking for the best interest to have it, to have it a wonderful event and a successful event, so, so thank you to everyone for doing that. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We will not be back till January 15, since the first meeting in January falls near the New Year's, New Year's Day, New Year's Eve, so there will be no meeting on that first Wednesday in January, so we'll be back here on January 15. And, are we forgetting anything? Remember anything? Okay, so with that, thank you so much, and have a wonderful start to the new year. Meeting adjourned at 8:01.